Alright, so we'll get started. This is a subcommittee meeting of the Public Safety Subcommittee of the Springfield City Council. I am the chairman Orlando Ramos. I'm joined by members of this committee, Justin Hurst and Council Tracy Whitfield. Also joined by councilors, Gumisin Gomez and Council Sean Curran. And, and you just heard.
Sergeant Pelcher.
Sergeant Pelcher introduced himself. We're also joined by Attorney Moore. There's one, one item on the agenda very quickly that I wanted to discuss, which is my proposed ordinance for dirt bikes in the city of Springfield. You heard me talk about this at the last regular meeting. This is essentially an ordinance to make it to prohibit our gas stations from selling gasoline to illegal dirt bikers. And, and it's similar to other ordinance that is under books in other municipalities in Connecticut. And we're just, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to combat this issue of illegal dirt bikers on our roads. That's been a, been a major problem. And I wanted to set up this meeting because I know councilors are going to have questions. At the last meeting, it went pretty, it was a pretty lengthy meeting, so I didn't want to have this discussion there. So I figured it would be best to hold the subcommittee meeting so that we can answer all questions and hopefully it'll go smoothly at the next regular meeting. So without objection, I'll turn it over to Attorney Moore for a brief overview on the ordinance. And then we'll get our thoughts from the representative from the Springfield Police Department.
Thank you, counselor. As was stated previously, the ordinance really is pretty straightforward. It seeks to establish a hundred dollar fine for owners of gas stations who are allowing people to come on unlawful motor vehicles. So we would be thinking of these kind of off-road bikes, ATVs, those types of vehicles, I guess theoretically snowmobile. Something like that where they're coming into a gas station looking to gas up. That's going to be something that's made a fine within the city. If that vehicle is attached to or properly rigged onto a trailer, you know, like someone's actually, you know, traveling to and from something and it's not on the roadway, that's allowed to have gas distribution in that instance. But other than that, it's really going to be something that's not allowed in the city. So we have as a part of the ordinance, a piece for enforcement. And it has, let's see, punch up our draft ordinance here. It has enforcement powers with the fire department currently. I don't know if that's something that the committee wants to discuss. I think when drafting this, that's sort of something that different municipalities are going to deal with a little bit differently. So when I looked at this one, we just started with fire department. I think mostly Council Ramos said, because of the other draft ordinance we had looked at, you know, a lot of them had said the fire department is in the best position to issue that fine. That's sort of what they thought about. So with that being said, I'll kind of leave it as is. I know, you know, there might be questions. I'd be happy to answer what I can. But it is a fairly straightforward ordinance, again, looking to essentially penalize an activity that is unlawful in the city at this stage, but doesn't have a fine attached to it.
Now, Attorney Moore, is there a way that we can amend that section to make it enforceable by both the fire department and the police department?
Absolutely. Yeah. And I think that's something, a lot of part of what we're doing now. If that's something that the body wants to do, that makes sense. You know, code enforcement sometimes gets involved or something like that. But I don't know in this case if it makes sense with like a you know, petroleum fuel distribution, you think of fire department immediately, and then you probably think of PD second for sure. But I don't know about code that, you know, that's something that's maybe a little off there.
Yeah, I think that would be my, my preference as the, as the lead sponsor. Sergeant Pelcher, any, any thoughts?
Yeah, you know, I, I put some notes down here and that was one of the things that caught my attention. I guess my, my thoughts are that more people investigating or more people that have some enforcement power, the better. Sometimes people as they drive by a gas station or something and they see if this amendment gets passed and they may see some dirt bikers gassing up. I think the first thing they're going to do is somehow get ahold of the police department. And I guess if, if it's written like this, then we would just kick it over to the fire department to investigate, which, you know, the fire department I'm sure is fully capable of, but I guess my opinion is the more the merrier.
Now, as an ordinance officer, I'm sure that you deal with this issue all the time. What are your thoughts in terms of the ordinance overall? Is there any, anything that you think should be improved? Do you think this will help combat the issue of dirt bikes?
Okay, so I, I definitely gave it some thought. I spoke with Lieutenant Mel Kwiatkowski, he's in charge of our traffic division today about it. And he would like someone, you know, whoever drafted this to put in the verbiage off-highway vehicles, because in the chapter 90 laws of Massachusetts, that's how these vehicles are referred to.
Right.
So in the, you know, the first paragraph A where it talks about motorized recreational vehicle, you could certainly keep that language and, you know, refer to it that, but at somewhere in the, in the ordinance, it probably should specify off-highway vehicles, because that's technically how the state of Massachusetts uses that, that term to describe these types of vehicles. Secondly, again, I, I thought about this and I said, you know, I, I think it, I honestly think it will have an impact over time. Do I think it's going to be the stop measure, an immediate stop measure? No, I think over time and education and getting the message out. And, you know, maybe beforehand, before this gets enacted and, you know, do a, a public information blitz and so people don't you know, that are riding these off-highway vehicles, don't show up with the, you know, the, the misinformation or non-information that they can still get gas here. I really think a media blitz to, to get this message out would be beneficial to everybody involved. And over time, I, I think you know, people that live in the heart of the city per se, that, you know, let's say they're coming from, I don't know, Boston and, and Fargo or something. You know, they, it's not as easy if you live maybe in the north end or south end, you could go to West Springfield, Connecticut and Chigaby. But people that live in the heart of the city, they're going to have a tough time getting gas if they're, you know, if they need it. The other thing that Lieutenant Kwiatowski said that if, if this does pass, he would spearhead getting other sister cities and brother cities to possibly enact similar language amendments to their ordinances and push that blanket out even further. And if, if we can get that behind us, West Springfield, Chigaby, Ludlow, Wilbraham, and all the surrounding towns behind us, I really think this would have some bite to it.
Yep.
So he's, he's willing to, to spearhead that and, you know, and contact these surrounding municipalities and see if he can get them on board.
Yep. No, that's great. That's a great point. And thank you for bringing that up. That was definitely part of the, the original plan was, was to, you know, communicate with, with surrounding communities to make sure to see if they would implement the same, the same measures. Any questions from the council?
I have, I have a question. Just the chair, sorry. I'm sorry, Counselor Gomez, did I cut you off?
Go ahead, Counselor, go ahead.
Couple of different questions. I guess one I would ask, you know, what potentially might be the city's investment in terms of signage? So that the onus doesn't fall on the gas stations. And could we potentially look into that? And then I guess two, you know, is more of a comment. You know, my fear is that you very well may have those individuals working at these stores having confrontations with these motorists as they decide not to allow them to get gas. And so I guess, are there any provisions that might be made for that? You know, we would hate to have a situation in which, you know, the, the actual individual who is either calling the police or who is not serving the individual, because it's a violation. You know, they, they are going to be the ones who are on the front lines. And I'd imagine by the time the police get there, there will, the altercation will have already occurred. And then I guess my final statement outside of, of notification, it might make sense to allow these businesses to at the very least get a, get a warning first. You know, as you do some sort of media blitz to let folks know that, that we are no longer serving these off-road vehicles. But you have a variety of different people that are going to be working in these gas stations who will have to be made aware. So my question and a couple of comments.
Thank you for those. So the first one is, under, under the ordinance, the way that it's written, it is a responsibility of the, the gas station owners to, as far as signage. And I don't believe that it's specific as to what sort of signage it has to be. It could, it could just be a sort of a laminated printout that says, you know, we, we, we you know, that they cannot serve illegal dirt, dirt bikers. So I don't, I don't think that there's too much of a cost associated with that one, Counselor. But if you have any suggestions, you know, we're, I'm open to, to hearing them.
I think the city should, I think the city should invest in the signs. And ensure that they're properly posted. That would be my, my suggestion.
So there's the gas stations would have to would have to put up the signs that are paid for by the city.
I think so. I mean, something that is, that is actually, you know, going to sustain itself over the course of time and, and, I mean, I, I just don't think that we should put the onus on the businesses for something that the city is trying to rein it. That, that's it. So I, I mean, it might not be a big cause. But it's certainly something that we should consider.
I guess the, the question would be which, which department is going to pay for it, right? It has to come out of some budget, so. Are we gonna make responsible for, for paying for it?
Just something to think about. I don't think it's something that's going to hold up the ordinance. But I, I don't think that the, the businesses ought to be responsible for reining in an issue that the city has had in any way, shape of.
I appreciate that. I appreciate those thoughts. I, I'll give it a little bit more thought. I'm open to amendments, like I said. It would just be a matter of identifying which department will be responsible and then meeting with them to see, to make sure that that's something that can be possible. And then your, your other thought regarding, you know, the, and, and that's one of my concerns as well is, is, you know, the, the enforcement part of it, right? You, the, the position that we're actually putting these, these gas station clerks in to have to deny illegal dirt bikers. I mean, I, everyone already, it is, it is my position that these illegal dirt bikers know that they're operating illegally. And, you know, they, they know that they are breaking the law, so. No, I don't know. I, I don't necessarily want to put these clerks in an awkward position or in a position where they'll be targeted. I guess I'll, Sergeant Pelcher, any thoughts?
Yes, that certainly went through my mind a little bit as well. That's why I think the initial stages of this, of a media blitz, not just one night or one weekend, it really has to get the message out there because you know, these bikers, you know, they, they, they talk to each other, they communicate. And if messages are getting out and over time, everyone should be educated that they will not be served gasoline within Springfield. And I think relatively quickly, the word will spread and, and these confrontations will diminish over time, if, if, if at all, you know, but it, it is, it is a thought, no doubt.
And I guess it's, it's a tough one too, because we, you know, we're trying to, like what we're, we are essentially talking about legislating behavior, right? And, and, you know, we can't really control that. You know, it, it is already illegal for, for dirt bikers to to operate, right, in, in the city. And we're talking about their reaction to something that's already illegal. So that's, that's a tough one. I don't, I don't know.
And you know what, two representative, Representative Ramos, Representative Ramos and Counselor Ramos. May, maybe just the offer to assist from the city if folks need help with signage. Cause I think this, not only does the media blitz need to be significant, but I think signage needs to be significant. However, that, 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 that works. And if a gas station says we're, we're comfortable with putting up our own signage, fine. But I think we need to make it abundantly clear to these gas stations and to these riders, riders more importantly, that you're not getting served here. And that, that is against the city's ordinance. So I, you know, I think we ought to play a role in it. And maybe it's just more of a supportive role in the event that they can't or don't feel comfortable doing the signage themselves.
This, this, um, thank you for those thoughts. Does anyone, any, any other council have any thoughts on, on how we can accomplish sort of getting the word out? Because I know typically, you know, whenever we pass an ordinance, we rely on the media to report to report these things. You know, you see them in the paper, the next day you see it on the, on the news, the very next day. But the, the sergeant is correct. That really is, is sort of the, how, the limit of, you know, the reporting on, on these. Do, and we don't necessarily have our own budget for, you know, within the city council to, to advertise or to to help get the word out. So does anybody else on the council have any thoughts on how we can help do that?
Well, wouldn't the, wouldn't the establishments have to get a written notification? Like, we can't enforce something and they don't know. So do we send something out in writing to the establishments that will be affected by the ordinance? Also, I'm going to have to agree with putting a burden on organizations that are kind of being forced to put up signage and to enforce this ordinance. I think seems a little bit unfair. And I'm thinking that the budget could come from either police or fire, since they're the enforcing agencies. We could build it into their budget. I think that we could work with finance to see where we can get creative with the funding. But I think that, that those two would be, either one of those budgets would be an appropriate budget to place the funds.
Can I, can I say something?
Sure.
Does anyone have a, an idea of how many gas stations there are in the city? I'm sure, obviously there's quite a few. I would think there, there'd be a benefit to having a standardized sign that, you know, goes to all of them versus them being able to make up their own sign and where they could put it. You know, I really think like when you go in, into a store and it says, no one under the age of 17 can be, you know, served cigarettes or whatever. That's kind of like a standardized sign wherever you go. I think it would be beneficial to have a standardized sign to disseminate throughout the, the, the gas stations of the city.
Yeah. And I, and I agree to that, Sergeant. Definitely. And also I, 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 as a member of the city council, I do take also responsibility to ensure that this word gets out there. If we're putting this together and we're passing it, then it becomes our responsibility to ensure that we have alert it, everybody, even though we know that they know, but they're not going to know when time comes. So we need to, to find the ways that we can do this and inform this folks in that standardized sign is, is obviously the way to go. They see they're going to see it in two, three, four places. Now, the question that I got for you, Sergeant, is that you, we talked about the fire department and you say if you guys are called, you always can pass it over to the fire department for them to deal with the issue. And as we discussed, what could happen? Are, are we saying also that the fire departments will be accompanied by the police? And not by themselves? Because if there's an issue where they have to act, they have not got the power.
Right. I guess I was probably thinking that this would be an after investigation, meaning the violation occurred, someone became aware of it, the fire department would maybe contact the gas station, review their video, you know, you know, stuff like that and do a little investigative work versus the on-the-spot kind of response. No, that's, that's not what I was thinking for the fire department.
Okay, great. I agree with you on that.
Yep.
So I'm sorry, Counselor Ramos, is it okay to speak?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. I feel weird about asking an attendant to ask these people on illegal dirt bikes not to pump gas directly into their vehicle. Let's say you have a younger female, even a male, and you have some rowdy dirt bikers. And I'm not saying they're all rowdy and I'm not saying they're all riding illegal, but and to ask them to go outside or over the attendant, what, what would they do? Just not provide the gas? It's not like turn it on? And then lock the door? Because what if they come in? Like, what, how would that work?
And I understand the concern, Counselor. I think, I think it's a valid concern. We all, you know, when I, when I first I thought about this, or I first heard about this ordinance, that's one of the things that I thought about. But again, we're, we're talking about legislating human behavior. I mean, that's, you know, it, it's, and we're talking about something that's already illegal. This is, this is, we're just establishing a fine to something that is not, that is against the law. Essentially. But to answer your question more directly, what would happen is if, if these gas stations are turned on, are not turned on automatically, they're turned on manually, right? So if you go to pump gas, whether you're using a car to cash, you have to get, you, you have to get it approved manually by whoever's at the, at the, at the cashier at the register. And that person would then be able to say, you know, reject the transaction because the person, the, the dirt biker is not on a trailer. So then, you know, they, they could either just deny it or deny it and, and instruct them to come back on a trailer, essentially.
Yeah, I would hate to see a transaction go wrong with an ordinance that was enforced by the city council. Because I could see it going wrong. I could just see someone upset. They don't have any gas, their dirt bike is out there. They need gas to get home or wherever they were going. And then, you know, it becoming a dangerous or violent situation. I, I just really, I have, I do have some major concerns there. And then I also agree with Counselor Hurst with, if this is something that we're enforcing via the ordinance, then we definitely shouldn't put undue burden on the employer to pay for a sign, whether they're uniform or not. It should not have to come out of their, out of their pocket. But that's just my two and a half cents. I just, it makes me uncomfortable to put anyone in harm's way over gas, I guess. And I know what you mean about the illegal dirt bikes and the trouble that they're causing. So but that's just probably the only part that makes me feel a little bit uncomfortable.
Thank you for those thoughts. And I, and I am leaning towards, you know, after, after hearing your thoughts and councilor's thoughts, I'm leaning towards having a conversation with the fire department to see if they can provide some, some of that, like a standardized science, similar to what they already provide for, for gas stations. So, you know, we might, I might schedule a follow-up meeting to have a conversation with the fire department about that. But the other thing, the other thing I want to, I want to, the other point I want to make, I know that we're, we're talking about, we don't want to put people on harm's way, but you know, these, these dirt bikers are, are out of control and we can't be afraid of them and be afraid of, you know, passing laws or ordinances to stop them just because we're afraid about the, of the way that they're going to react. Right? I mean, a few years ago, the city council raised the, the the age limit for, for buying tobacco. And I'm sure that there were people who were upset with that, right? Young people who went to go buy cigarettes and were upset with the fact that they got denied. We can't control that. We, we just can't control human behavior, but it is our, our job to legislate. We are the lawmakers of the city and we have to make sure that we are, we're creating laws to protect people of our city. Counselor Hurst?
Sorry, sorry. So a couple of different things. I want to think a little bit more about what you said. Because I, I certainly think you, you, you make a point. I think what would make me feel comfortable is, is the mayor on board with this? Do we know?
I'm sorry?
Is the mayor on board with this ordinance?
Yes, the mayor's on board.
So I, I think before we do anything, I'd like to see what the mayor's commitment is to really doing a, a media blitz. And what he's willing to put forward. If he really wants to see this implemented, which I'd imagine he does, I've heard a lot of tough talk on it. I want to see what he's willing to bring to the table in terms of really doing a media blitz for the first, I don't know, three months prior to its implementation and, 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 and then potentially we, we implement it. But I'd love to know what that commitment is. And I'd also love to know how he plans to get that message out. And, you know, that would help me, you know, that, that would help make this decision easier in terms of moving forward with this ordinance. Because at the end of the day, he's the one that's going to be responsible with, you know, overseeing whether there is a media blitz and certainly making sure that the funding is there. So I'd love to know what his commitment is. And then the other thing with respect to the signs, and maybe it's an attorney more question. I'm not a hundred percent sure we can require folks to put up anything at their business, but I, I'd love to hear from you, Attorney Moore.
Attorney Moore?
Sure. Yeah, the ordinance, as it's written, contains a requirement that signs be placed in English and Spanish and set language, like one inch font height. So as to whether, you know, the government can require a business to place a sign up, I think the answer to that is yes. That does happen for businesses, gas stations in particular, with, you know, like hazardous signage or, you know, you saw the signs pop up when people had cell phones, like, you know, don't get back in your car because you could start a fire through static electricity, all that stuff started. So you know, essentially the fire department's telling them to put up another sign with the business that's licensed. You know, could they make an argument that says this is a, a bridge too far? Maybe, maybe, yeah. I mean, I'd be, I'd be willing to listen to that argument to see where, where they stand with it. So it's a good question. But as I read it, you know, I kind of see it in the line of, you know, the fire department's, you know, existing capability of requiring the licensee who's holding hazardous materials to post a sign. Again, this doesn't relate to the storage of the material. It's more to the usage of it. So, you know, it's a good question. But, you know, that's the best answer I think I can give you today.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would, I certainly appreciate your answer, Attorney Moore, but I would argue that you might want to look into that just, just a little bit further and maybe report out to us at, at the next meeting. You know, I, I certainly will defer to you as the practicing attorney, but it does seem like it could be a, a bit dicey. Thank you, Attorney Moore.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Counselor Curran?
Thank you and good evening, everybody. Just to get me up to speed on this, whether Attorney Moore or Sergeant Pelcher. There's, there's no law against those one gallon gas tanks like for a lawnmower or a boat or anything like that. Is it, is it legal? I mean, to go to a gas pump and just fill those up? I mean, I think everybody usually does that.
Yeah, as far as I understand it, you could have, you know, like you're going to mow your, your lawn, right? You get this small little one or two gallon container, you fill it up with gas. If it's in an approved gasoline holding container, my understanding, and again, I'm not an expert on like petrol dispersion or anything like that, storage, is that you got to have an approved container. If you have that, you can dispense the gas. So theoretically, they could drive up a dirt bike rider in his car, fill that thing up, go back home, fill up his dirt bike and hit the road. That doesn't, this does not stop that. You know, I think that's, we all understand that there's not going to prevent that.
Okay. And, and to Orlando, what is, what are the other communities here in Massachusetts that have implemented this ordinance? Representative?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that there are any in Massachusetts. I know that the city of Worcester had discussed this a couple of years ago. I'm not certain that they were able to, I'm not certain that they, that they actually passed it. They, they discussed it, but I don't think anybody made an official proposal. In Connecticut, there are many communities, including Hartford. I believe the, the one that, the ordinance that we got was from Bridgeport. So they, they have it, even Connecticut has it as well.
So, so if I could, like in Hartford, how do they handle it? Does the clerk just shut off the gas if a, a dirt bike is at the pump or is, I mean, how, how exactly? I, I think the uniform signage by Sergeant Pelcher, the suggestion, I think that's great. But again, to Tracy Whitfield's concerns, Counselor Whitfield's concerns, you know, obviously this could be a situation where the clerk could be put in some danger. situation where the clerk could be put in some danger, but how, how do they handle it in Hartford, if we know?
Um, I, 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 I know that the, the way that they deny their gases by actually, by not actually turning on the pump. So they would deny them if you're, you know, somebody's swiping a credit card, then that transaction will be denied. Or if they're paying cash and the clerk notices that they're, uh, they're on a dirt bike, then that transaction will be denied. I'm not certain whether or not they're having any issues with that. Um, we, I, we could look into it a little bit further. Um, I could look into maybe perhaps um inviting someone from, from either Hartford or Bridgeport to attend our next meeting to discuss it.
Sure.
It's been on, it's been on the books for a few years.
Yeah, no, I mean, just, just so you know, I mean, if they commit, I mean, I support the idea. Uh, just uh, you know, how do you im- implement it? And uh, and if we could, you know, if you're in, furthering your research and, and your hearings, I, it, it's just a question of, you know, there is a danger when you fill up those one gallon gas tanks as well, you know, because obviously you're using a, a gas pump that's supposed to be for an automobile. I mean, are, are there other states? Do, do they have like a different kind of way of dispensing that? Uh, that gas, um, because I was just kind of curious, because if we take the dirt bikes away and it's, and the clerks shut off the pump, you know, you're gonna have kids coming up with the one gallon tanks. And so that's gonna be, you know what I mean? Cause I, the, the, the dirt bikers are gonna, you know, they are gonna use the one gallon tank. That's gonna be their, the next move. So is there any order? Just, I don't know if there's a law concerning that or it's just a curiosity that's kind of came to my mind or what, in this discussion.
That's a good point. Thank you for, for bringing that up. Um, you know, as I mentioned before, this isn't going to uh solve the, the issue altogether. Um, you know, our goal is to just make it harder for these illegal dirt bikes to operate. And this is just one step further to making it harder for them to, to operate as business as usual. Um, but you're right, yeah. You know, that's, that's probably what they're gonna resort to and that's, that's, that's fine. You know, we'll, we'll just uh we'll continue to be vigilant on this issue and try to come up with, with um, with other ways to, to uh, to keep the public safe from illegal dirt bikers.
Um, I do support it and uh thank you for your leadership on the issue, uh, Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other questions? Right, it's getting close to our, um, actually, I don't think we have another subcommittee meeting, but uh thanks everyone for coming. What I'll do is I'll, I'll schedule another. Um, it sounds like we still have some unanswered questions, so I'll schedule another subcommittee meeting. I will invite the representative from the fire department, I'll invite a representative from the mayor's office so we can get some, some of those um uh questions that Counselor Hurst had um answered as to the mayor's commitment to this, uh, to this issue. And I will look into, um, I'll have our staff look into inviting someone from either Hartford or Bridgeport to uh give us an overview of how it's going there and then we'll go from there.